Next on the agenda this evening is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on any item not, not on the agenda or on the agenda that is of interest or concern. And the guidelines for this public participation in audience comments is that when you are recognized, we ask that you come over here to use the lectern and the microphone so that you may be seen and heard by those who are present in council chambers and also those who are viewing the council meeting on government access channel 21. We ask that if you have written comments, that you submit them to the city clerk. We also ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or fewer. And we ask that you please state your name, your address, and if you wish to emphasize a relationship to the city, such as that you are a resident, a property owner, a business owner, or whatever particular emphasis you feel would be of use for the council to know, please do so at that time. And with that, I will ask if anyone has signed up for audience comments.
I have two. Liz Tiedeman followed by Erica Daffner. Liz, if you'd like to approach the podium.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here to give you, my name is Liz Tiedeman for the record. I'm a resident of Bellevue, Washington, and I'm a surrogate decision maker for my beloved elders who live here in Issaquah. And among my beloved elders are not only the ones related to me by blood, but also those that have become dear to me through my association. My parents live in a retirement community here in Issaquah. And I really have a lot of admiration and respect for these members of the greatest generation who don't always have the energy to come to a city council meeting. I've learned that they often watch these meetings on channel 21. So with all that in mind, I'm here to give you a status update on something I reported to you on in February, and that is before the Washington State Department of Health Certificate of Need program is an application that will change the ownership of the Briarwood Nursing Home at Timber Ridge, from Timber Ridge, to Horizon House, which is a retirement community in Seattle. And there are a lot of technical details about Washington State wanting to balance the number of nursing home beds, supply and demand. Because if there's excess supply, demand will be created and it'll be very expensive in the healthcare world. But if there is insufficient supply, then people don't have access to the services they need. So that is the thinking behind the Washington State Certificate of Need program. And so this application makes its way through a number of different steps. In February, I was here to tell you that there was going to be a public hearing on February 28th. That public hearing took place. And a number of people submitted written comments, a number of people spoke at the public hearing. And then the applicant had until March 15th in order to submit response comments. The applicant did that. And now the status of the application is the Department of Health Certificate of Need program is expected to provide a decision by the end of April. Their decision will either be to approve the certificate of need application project. It is possible they'll say, we need more information on something. It's possible they'll approve it with conditions. Why do I bring it to the attention of the Issaquah City Council? It's because the access to healthcare services in this city is something that is of interest to the city. And this is one part of it. In addition, I will say, I do have some concern for the residents of the Timber Ridge Retirement Community. And these beloved elderly people are now eight years older than they were when they first committed six-figure entrance fees to the Timber Ridge Retirement Community. And these entrance fees are going to be used once again as collateral for construction loans to fund a expansion of Timber Ridge. That is absolutely how business works. But when the Timber Ridge Retirement Community was first proposed to the state and also to the Talis master planning development process here in Issaquah, the construction was really supposed to be finished by about 2011. In other words, the assets of these elderly people would be less at risk after a certain period of time. Well, the economy changed, a number of things changed, and these people have gotten older and their assets are being used once again as collateral on construction loans. That's how business works, and I think that's something that should be of interest to the city. So I have a written piece of information, my name, contact information, and I'm not an official in this process, simply an informed consumer. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Hello, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Erica Daffner. I'm a resident of Summamish, but I also represent the Issaquah Swim Team. And I'm here to put support, you guys have the Parks Bond on your docket tonight, is that correct? So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a community representation for the importance of parks in our area, not parks just being ballfields that I know you guys have been supportive of, but also the pool. And having been on the swim team, which is an all-volunteer run swim team, a not-for-profit organization that uses bone pool as our home pool, has for 37 years, we're the third-largest swim team in the state, support lots of good swimmers from Liberty High School, Skyline High School, Issaquah High School, all those high school programs, as well as kids that are coming up through water safety. And I just think as you consider this Parks Bond and whether you're going to support it or not, you should really consider supporting it. And many times organizations like you that are cash-strapped and have ways you can use your money, sometimes look at a pool and say, we're going to leave that to the private sector. But the fact is, the private sector doesn't really, there are no other pools, public pools that support teams like ours, public clubs like Summamish Club, which is under duress, other clubs that are coming out here, don't make space available to us. So you need to look at it like a Parks district that would open space instead of looking at it as a commercial entity. So it's something that public does really well, like a library. It's got a cost to it, but bone pool is very much an asset to this swim team. It's an asset to the community in terms of aquatic use for people here, as well as water safety. And I think as you look at your budget and whether to approve this and send it out to the public, it's something that you should really, hopefully diligently consider to keep supporting organizations like us that use it 50 hours a week to help develop young athletes, to help develop young lives, to help create water safety opportunities for everyone. So that's all I really have to say today. It's a great local resource that we have that we'd like to see continue and hopefully over time even expand it, but I'm not sure that that's on the docket today. But it would be great to someday expand that, that access to one. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak during audience comments who has not had an opportunity to sign up?
Hi, my name's Connie Marsh. I live in Issaquah and also have a store at 1175 North West Gilman Boulevard, Suite B-11. Today, I'm wearing a new hat. In case you were wondering what was happening with Lake Summamish State Park, we're in the middle of trying to organize a friends group. And we are creating bylaws, a mission statement, and going through articles of incorporation, having them reviewed by attorneys. And so we are excited to try to make Lake Summamish State Park amazing and a great asset to the city and to the surrounding region that can come play at the state park. And the opportunities are mind-boggling when you think of the space and the things that could happen in that park if only there was enough energy and time to get her done, right? And so this group is realistic, and it's the interim board trying to figure out how to create a group that will accommodate a large variety of users long-term, well into the future. And so far, so good. We are planning on having a meeting April 18th, if we can find a large enough venue to do it. We're expecting about the turnout that we got for the first meeting, which was like 80 to 90 people over at Tibbetts so far. We haven't been able to get a venue, but we're hopeful. And so I wanted to keep a marker in everyone's brain for that date. And we'll shortly send out an email far and wide to everyone we can think of who might want to come help make the state park a great place. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak during audience comments who has not had an opportunity to sign up? Anyone else who wishes to speak? Third call, seeing and hearing no one else who wishes to speak during audience comments, audience comments are closed. And the next item on the council's agenda this evening are committee reports. And we will start with Councilmember Forkner.
Thank you. The UTAC Committee has not had anything put on its agenda for the month, so right now we're not anticipating having a meeting.
Okay. Councilmember Goodman?
The Land and Shore Committee will meet on April 9th at 5:00 PM here in council chambers. On our agenda is Regional Growth Center designation. Also, if the consent agenda passes tonight, we have Agenda Bill 6595, which is consideration of a major amendment to Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement and creation of new development agreement for Swedish Hospital. We also will have another round of discussions regarding the TDR land use code amendment. We will get another update, the next chapter in the Kohani Annexation Study, and we will continue our discussion of the development and design standards for the central Issaquah Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marts?
No report.
Councilmember Sherrell?
Thank you, Mayor. The still constituted Transportation Committee will not have a meeting this month as we will be having a work session on the issues of concurrency. And given the relationship between the topics, there wasn't a need for a second committee meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Services and Safety is next scheduled to meet on April 8th. We also at this moment do not have an agenda set, so just continue to watch the city website for updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
No report.
Councilmember Butler?
No report.
Right, Mayor's Report this evening. There will be an executive session held this evening to discuss potential property acquisition. That is under RCW 42.30.110 bracketed 1 and bracketed lowercase b. The item is expected to take 15 minutes and no action is anticipated. Next item, April 14th through the 20th, 2013, is proclaimed to be Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the city of Issaquah. And that is in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. And I will read portions of the proclamation. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Issaquah Communications Center. And whereas professional public safety telecommunications are a vital link for our community and are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Now therefore, I, Ava Freisinger, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through 20th to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in their city in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe and witness whereof. I have here on two set my hand and the seal of the city of Issaquah this 15th day of April 2013. So that's somewhat premature, but it will, it will be. Citywide spring cleanup event will, a citywide spring cleanup event will be held Saturday, April 20th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM in honor of Earth Day. And volunteers will be concentrating on areas south of Interstate 90. For more information, visit the website downtownissaquah.com. Continuing the celebration of Arbor Day and Earth Day on Saturday, April 20th, the city is looking for volunteers to plant trees along Issaquah Creek and the Pickering Trail. To participate, check in at the information booth near the Pickering Trail entrance, that's over at the Pickering Barn, between 9:00 through 11:00 AM. And planting will take place from 11:00 AM to noon. This also will be on the city website, issaquahwa.org.
Dot gov.
Dot gov, sorry. Darn, dot gov. I knew something was wrong there. Dot gov, alrighty. April 20th is a busy day. It also marks the opening season of our farmer's market at the Pickering Barn. So visit the market on Saturday, April 20th. Visit it through October 12th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, rain or shine. The farmer's market and all the events there will be going on. Recent joint meeting was held between the city council and the Issaquah School Board on March 27th, 2013. And some of the discussion highlights, there was discussion of the Issaquah Middle School, Clark Elementary, and Tiger Mountain High School remodels and moves. There was discussion of school boundaries, school impact fee formula methodology, and some discussion of a legislative bill requiring impact fees to be paid at the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Discussion of Skateboard Park and Rainier Trail. And then next item, the last item, the city council will hold a work session on Wednesday, April 3rd, to discuss Regional Growth Center application. And that will be from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, and that will be followed by transportation concurrency discussion from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. And this particular special meeting will be held in the Eagle Room at City Hall, 130 East Sunset Way. And again, that's on our website, which is issaquahwa.gov. So the next item, I will ask if the accounts, payables, payroll have been reviewed by the council.
They have.
Okay. And then I will ask the council's pleasure on adoption of the consent calendar. Councilmember Butler?
I would move approval of the consent calendar as submitted.
Second.
Okay. So moved by Butler, seconded by Winterstein. All those in favor of adoption of the consent calendar as submitted, please say aye. Opposed? Right. We've now moved on to items of regular business. And the first item is Agenda Bill 6565, the 2013 Docket of Proposed Amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. And this is coming before the council from DSD, I believe. Land and Shore. That would be me. Excellent. Yeah. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Agenda Bill 6565, this is, this is our annual process to amend the comprehensive plan. And the first step in that annual process is to establish the list of potential amendments, and we call that a docket. And so Land and Shore reviewed the docket, and we talked about, we made three changes to the proposed docket. The first one was to change docket number eight, which is the human service, human services element. We moved that from low priority to a high priority. And the reason we recommend doing that is because these are changes that the Human Services Commission discussed in 2011, and so we thought perhaps it was time to get that done. And there was discussion last year, I recall, when Councilmember Winterstein was at Land and Shore at one of the meetings when we were discussing this, and there was quite a discussion about wanting that element, that, that item to be completed. So we recommended changing that from low to high. We also talked about the utility system upgrades, which is docket item number 12, and we recommended moving that up from a low to a medium priority. And then we talked about docket item number 13, which is Costco. And we just passed our consent agenda, and on the consent agenda was an agenda bill that had to do with discussions with Costco on the potential development agreement. And part of that had, part of that has to do with the possibility of rezoning their land to urban village. And it's just a placeholder right now, but in order to have that done this year, it needed to be on the docket if it needs to be done. And so that's why we, we recommended adding that to the docket. And at this time, I would move to approve the revised list of potential comprehensive plan amendments as presented in Exhibit C.
Second.
Okay, moved by Goodman and seconded by Marts. Discussion and questions from the council. Any discussion or questions on this particular item? I am not seeing any burning desire to discuss or question. So I will then ask the council if you are ready to proceed to a vote on this topic. And I am seeing nodding of heads. All right. All those in favor of approving the revised list of potential comprehensive plan amendments as presented in Exhibit C, please say aye. Opposed? That passed unanimously. The next item to come before the council this evening, Item B, is Agenda Bill 6579, Parks Recreation Pool and Natural Area Park Bond Survey. And this has been, I believe, seen by our Safety and Services Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to, we have a presentation and then a little bit of information here if we could.
Okay, thank you.
So I know staff is ready with a presentation in regards to this. Just a quick reminder is before we step forward with this, and our goals of 2000, city council goals of 2012 and 2013, had a number of related issues in, under our goal setting. Improvements to Julius Bone Pool was one of them, to relocate and enhance the skateboard park, define and enhance Rainier Trail, public lands inventory, bike and pedestrian plan. So a lot of our goals for the last couple of years, I think will be things we'll be seeing addressed and hopefully potential be able to finally address at some time. City council so therefore directed administration to consider funding options for how to, you know, cover some of these issues that have came before us in regards to our city council goals. I know today we've got four staff members from Parks with us today, Margaret McLeod, Brian Bernstein, Ann McGill, and Rick Patterson, and thank you for coming this evening with a great presentation. You know, we have in the past with our bond measure that we passed the last time, I think there was like $3.5 million that were spent in open space purchasing. And with the great skill of the Parks Department, that $3.5 was turned into an additional $4.2, if I'm correct, and you can correct me as I go along here. So we do well with our Parks Bonds. But there's, as the next agenda bill after this, and we'll be talking about the structure of the committees, and we are looking at a new Parks, excuse me, a new council work-study session. And it's to be one of those events in which all seven council members can get together and sit and talk and debate and ask questions, something that we didn't have the ability to do when we came to services. And I think this is one of those very important pieces that we need to make sure that all the council members have had the opportunity to ask the questions they need of staff and to have a little bit more thorough discussion. So I would like to now go ahead and make a motion for this evening. And I would like to make a motion to forward Agenda Bill 6579 to the May work-study session for council discussion and questions.
Okay, that was moved by Barber and seconded by Forkner.
And I think staff is probably ready. I see Margaret up there, ready to start this off, and then we'll, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Margaret McLeod, and as Councilmember Barber expressed, there will be several of us making the presentation tonight, Brian Bernstein and Rick Patterson, and then Ann McGill, the director, is also here for any answering of questions. But first, wanted to start a presentation that this is for the proposed 2013 Conservation Finance and Park Bond. Well, I guess we're not going anywhere. Nope, that's not it. I'm so sorry. I thought I was on a slideshow. First, we wanted to give you a little history of the 2006 Conservation Finance Park Bond Funding allocations. And as Councilmember Barber said, that we had a little more than $3.5 million for Creekside and Uplands Open Space acquisitions, and that has been completed. We had a little more than $1.1 million for sports fields improvements. And then $467,000 for a neighborhood park at Talis Development, which is Harvey Manning Park at Talis. And then we are underway of Phase One construction of the Issaquah Confluence Parks area. And we were, what we were trying to do was consolidate all of our properties there. So as part of the acquisitions, we did acquire the Tully Anderson Park area. And so that helped in getting the entire 15 acres at the Issaquah Creek Confluence Parks area. And then another $67,000 for playground improvements at Veterans Memorial. And so that came up with a total park bond of $6,250,000. And that was substantiated by, by the Trust for Public Lands Public Survey. I also wanted to, we also wanted to show you that we did put together And that was substantiated by, um, by the Trust for Public Lands, um, Public Survey. I also wanted to, or we also wanted to show you that we did put together an information packet that was distributed to park, um, to city residents. And it was a list of questions that, um, most people asked and some answers. We also included in that, um, information sheet of, a map and showing exactly where the park bond monies would be expended. And the funded projects included, like I mentioned before, Harvey Manning Park at Talis, as well as the, uh, the new children's playground at Veterans Memorial Field. And we were able to, um, put in new synthetic turf fields at Central Park, Pad Three. And the Issaquah Creek's Confluence Parks area, we did the master site plan with the Berger Partnership. We also had three community input meetings, um, in order to involve our community with the design of the Confluence Parks area. And Phase One construction, which is underway right now and slated to end or be completed by June of this year, includes the, um, let's see if I can, oh, never mind. Includes the park entrance and trails, a children's play area, but it's a different children's play area. It's not our normal, um, tot lots that we put in at the other parks, but it's a boulder field so that kids will have a distant, kind of a way just to play on more kind of native materials rather than a tot lot. And I don't know if any of you have been at, excuse me, some of the, um, Concerts on the Green and have looked at the kids playing on the Harvey Manning statue and those boulders. They love those boulders. So that's kind of what we're trying to do at the, um, Confluence Parks area. Then we're also putting in the community garden, um, and then a public restroom, as well as the, the new picnic shelter, which you may have seen under construction and it's representative of the old Anderson barn. We also acquired a number of open space acquisitions, including Ingy Johnson Park, the South Issaquah Creek Greenway. We added the Stegglitz prop- excuse me, the Stegglitz property to that. McCary Woods up on Squawk Mountain, um, with former Issaquah 69 properties. The Toley Anderson Park, which is, um, at the Issaquah Creek Confluence Parks area, as well as Cora Park on the east fork of the, um, Issaquah Creek. And in order to, um, leverage our funding with, from the 2006 park bond acquisitions, this is a table that I put together showing how the, the money was spent. Just to give an example, the McCary Woods, um, of that park bond monies was 431,740 dollars. But we were able to leverage the park bond monies by getting monies through the King County Conservation Futures Tax Levy of 878,160. And through the Recreation and Conservation Office, Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, Urban Wildlife, um, category. So we were able to come up with a total money. The Stegglitz property was purchased entirely with park bond monies. But again, the Ingy Johnson Park, which is on the main stem of Issaquah Creek, we were able to get RCO, um, WWRP riparian category, King Conservation District, King Conserv- King County Conservation Future Tax Levy, as well as the King County. We had an ILA, um, for their, with the TDR program where they would strip, um, development rights from properties that they purchased in, um, King County. And that the development rights would come to the city of Issaquah. And again, Toley Anderson Park, we leveraged monies, which you can see on the chart, as well as Cora Park. So we were able to, um, essentially more than double our monies from 3 million, um, 3.5 million to a little more than almost 4.3 million. And we did the same thing with the synthetic turf fields. We use park bond funds, um, as well as park mitigation funds, capital improvement, and our ending fund balance. But we also were able to get a grant from the King County Youth Sports Field Grant Program. Again, the RCO WWRP Local Parks Program, 500,000. And then the Issaquah Soccer Club also donated 100,000 dollars. And for, um, we have our recommended, um, 2013 park bond expenditures. For the pool renovation improvements, 5 million. Parks and open space land acquisitions, 2 million. Park development, um, 1,525,000. And I won't go through the list of all the properties, but that was your Exhibit, um, A1 in the agenda bill. And then for sport field improvements, um, 1,475,000. For a total 2013 Conservation Finance Park Bond of 10 million dollars. And now I will turn it over to Rick.
Good evening. I'm Rick Patterson. I'm the Facilities Maintenance Manager for the city. I get to talk about this part because most of the stuff is maintenance-related here that we're dealing with. As a lot of you may know, the pool was built in 1971, funded by the Forward Thrust, uh, King County Bond, which was passed in actually 1968. And at the time was the largest parks and recreation bond it was, had been passed in the country. The pool is heavily utilized by the swimmers and our swim lessons and different folks. And what I want to kind of show you tonight is, uh, there's a little more than what you see on the surface. It's about the inner workings of the pool. So some of the things we're dealing with on the exterior of the pool is decay in different parts of the building and that sort of stuff. I, I want to give credit to our facilities crew. It does an outstanding job just keeping the building looking good for our users and patrons. And this is the kind of stuff that we're dealing with here. So, um, we'll kind of move to the other parts of the building here. Uh, I wanted to give an example of our current decking surface, which is kind of a, it's an aggregate surface, which is, uh, it's actually coming apart and defragging. It's kind of rough on the user's feet and that sort of stuff. We visited the Si View Pool who put down a product, uh, that is actually from the food industry. It's very durable, easy to clean, and holds up well. It's quite industrial, but it would be a great improvement to what we currently have if we're able to, to move forward on something like this. Again, speaking of, what you see is not always what's there. There's more to it. This is some of the HVAC and ducting system in the building. As you can see, it's in bad need of cleaning and some internal maintenance. Sections of the ducting are corroding away and would need to be replaced. Here's some more stuff that, um, we do our best to protect the, uh, the metals in the building by painting them and putting protective surfaces on there. But with the corrosive environment, it's hard to keep up with the chlorine and the other stuff that's going on in the pool. It's a, not a typical building. Some of the examples of the stuff we're dealing with here, on the left is a, a floor drain that we had to abandon. So we've capped it off and sealed it there. And you can't quite see it here, but there's some small, uh, round things there in the drain. And this is actually a internal picture of the drain pipe. We ran a, a camera down there. And those are actually rocks. This drain has corroded away completely and drains directly to the earth. So, uh, for many reasons, environmental and code reasons, we had to just abandon that drain and cap it. The reason I wanted to show this tonight is all the other piping in the building is of the same age. And so it's unknown what's under that slab. We do get symptoms when these things fail. So we just don't know how close they are to failure. We can say now that none of the others have failed at this time. But we don't know what the life expectancy on them is currently. Uh, this is an example of some of the corrosion that we're dealing with in our mechanical systems and stuff. This is the filter pit tank. And, uh, as you can see, the factory coatings have worn off over the 25 to 30-plus years they've been in there. They're kind of getting beyond their designed life expectancy. This is a temporary coating that was put on in 2007. And again, it's, it's a temporary deal. It kind of slows down the corrosion process. It's been a few years. And this is the, uh, blue tank that you just looked at in the previous slide. And you can see that the temporary coating is failing again and corroding. It's corroding underneath the, uh, the top coating that we, that we put on there. The next step that happens here, if these start to detach, we're worried that they may cause damage to the filter system, which you can see the beginning of that here. So there's, it kind of snowballs. Uh, this is another example of the, uh, temporary coating that we put on and how extensive some of the corrosion is, is, uh, inside the different piping systems. This is another example of, this is the supply outlet for the pool that's in the floor of the pool out there. And it circulates all the water. So, you know, the restriction there is probably less than 50 percent. That's completely scaled and corroded together. So it's really the internal of the components of the pool that are, it's like having clogged arteries. It's just having a, a really tough time, which is putting more, uh, uh, more wear and tear on the motors and pumps that, that move all the water in the building. This is the, a section of piping taken out from the heating system. You can see extremely reduced flow rates. And this has just built up over 30-plus years of, uh, minerals and deposits in the piping. And it's, it's throughout. There's, there's sections we've had to replace. Another example of, uh, you know, what you see may look good, but underneath is a little bit different. This is the shower tree that we took off in the men's shower. And again, heavily corroded here, but again, casting concrete. So it's not something we can repair. It's, it'll eventually fall in one day. The drain opening is actually right there. This is a vent system here, so. Another example, the domestic hot water tank, which provides hot water for all the showers and domestic water throughout the building. Looks great on the outside. This is a photograph of the inside we took in 2008. And these large sections here are, are the, uh, the tank liner has failed and has, uh, got corrosion going along there. These are the big sections of the liner that dropped off. We were able to get inside of the tank and clean that out so that those pieces don't get picked up and brought through our, uh, circulation pumps or anything like that. This is a topic of discussion that we've had in the facilities group, just is how are we gonna, how are we gonna deal with this when this thing does fail? Uh, it's, it's gonna fail. We don't know when. But we're discussing how do we get it out and get it replaced? It's landlocked within the building. We are looking at two different approaches. It's either taking out an entire section of roof and taking it out with a crane. Or this is an exterior wall here, taking out a section of wall. And then with a higher level forklift, take that out. So, uh, it's gonna be an extensive project when we come to face these sort of things. But, uh, we're doing what we can to keep things going now. These are just some different issues that we have out front, settling over the years. You can see we have a lot of, uh, potential trip hazards here. We go in on a regular, probably an annual basis, and we grind these down, these cracks and these, uh, these inconsistencies here. As it settles and the concrete rises, uh, we'll eventually run out of material to shave off. And then we'll be forced to, uh, address either closing off sections of the sidewalk or, uh, look for methods or funding methods to replace these sects, these sections here. So, um, just an idea of some of the, uh, capital projects that we have carried out at the pool over the last nine years. We put a new roof on in 94, shortly after the city took possession of it. Boiler systems, uh, new, new plaster. Some of these things are already reaching the end of their, uh, life again. The pool plaster in 2002 is already failing. We have large sections that have actually detached. We can't drain the pool right now because we're afraid the sectional wall will fall into the pool. So it's being held up by the water pressure right now. So we're, it's causing limits on us for what we can do in, in the maintenance. This last picture here is the 2010 boiler for the rep- replacement where we had to write, we had to write an agenda bill requesting funds for that. So, uh, the old one had just rotted out. But again, that's kind of the, uh, the story throughout the building. All of these components are nearing the end of their life cycle. Maintenance costs are gonna continue to go up as we're dealing with all these different, uh, failures and components. The likelihood that the pool will experience emergency shutdowns due to these failures increases the longer we try to extend the life of them. So I would say it's probably imminent that at some time we'll face emergency shutdown and have to deal with all of our users and let them know that the pool is shut down for, for some amount of time. Besides the pool stuff, I wanted to kind of show you how we came to the 5 million number. And this was a concept that was given to us by the Ballard-King Study, which was done in 2009. They did a complete survey and analysis, interviewing the staff, uh, bringing an engineering crew through the pool. And, uh, they had actually, um, they had several concepts that they put together, ranging from, I believe the highest was 45 million, which involved two brand-new pools and that sort of thing. But we're here tonight to just talk about Julius Bohm pool. So this is how we got to the 5 million. And these are some of the items that, you know, the users would see. An improved entry, new front desks, uh, the windows and exterior insulation would be energy code improvements to reduce energy consumption and being compliant with, uh, compliance with current energy codes. Again, improved locker rooms for our users, family changing rooms. These are things that we do get comments on regularly and, uh, asking about, you know, when the pool might get these sort of things. The city right now is going through a self-analysis, uh, along with a consultant for all of our ADA access. So this would bring the pool into compliance with, uh, current ADA laws, providing elevator access to our second floor bleacher areas and that sort of thing. A new bulkhead, plaster liner. And then, uh, the last bullet point there is really related to a lot of the mechanical issues that we just reviewed in all these pictures. So, uh, that's our 4.8 million, which came out in 2009. And so, uh, that's, that's our 5 million dollar estimate for the pool bond. And there's the happy users of our pool. If it gets everything it needs to last another 15 or 20 years.
Rick?
Yes?
This, I'm not sure if you can answer it, if maybe, uh, someone, um, daily users? How many people actually on a, a day go through this facility?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I know we've had up to, at busy times, up to, okay. Okay.
The last time we did a survey on that, Eileen, it was between 500 and 600, uh, users per day. Uh, we open up real early in the morning, I think around 5:00, and we go till 9:30 at night. And, um, one of the main activities we have at the pool is swim lessons. And we're part of the King County, um, Drowning Prevention Coalition. And, um, and as the other gentleman, Eric, uh, mentioned, we have three swim teams. But our top activity there is teaching people how to swim. And, um, and anytime that you want to visit, any of you, we'd be happy to, um, bring you to the pool and show you what goes on there.
And, and I know on top of that, there's also, actually, Ann, I was one of your water safety instructors there. And I actually taught lessons in this pool for many, many years. And I taught your lifeguards and your water safety people.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
But, but even on top of all of that, I mean, there's exercise. I know there's a lot of people with arthritis and physical ailments that come in.
We, we have the arthritis classes. We have water exercise. We have some folks in there, uh, with post-Poleo syndrome that are taking, um, classes. Uh, we have, uh, folks that are developmentally disabled. We have preschoolers. We have the mom and tot classes. And so when you go up there, you see people of all ages and all skill levels, um, using the pool all day long and into the evening.
Councilmember Mertz?
I saw on the previous slide, I believe it said 4.8 million in capital. And it was, was it $226,000 a year annual subsidy? Is that right?
Yeah, 226,000 in annual subsidy.
If you're gonna fix the stuff that's perennially breaking down, why would we then have to spend more next year than we spent last year?
Uh, this was, the Ballard-King Study, actually, they had a, a range of numbers. And as the improvements increased, the subsidy did go down. Because some of the other options they threw out there had different, had additional amenities to the pool, which in theory would increase the revenues, uh, on that side. So I, I'm not sure where the 226 is compared to what the current day subsidy is.
I, I just don't see if, if you're not adding any features and you're just improving things that are unreliable, why would, why the carrying cost would be higher? That doesn't, that doesn't seem clear. Well, I assume that means subsidy over where we're at today?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what the current day subsidy is.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number. But that is a lower number than what we're currently subsidized at.
Oh, I'm, okay. I'm sorry. It's not over current, it's just carrying total, in total. All right, thank you.
During, when they did the feasibility study, they did an assessment of just each, like I said, like we're saying, each different design had an estimate on what the city subsidy would be based on the current, like, how we operate today.
Yeah, that's just annual operating cost, right? Okay, thank you.
No more questions on that pool?
Councilmember Butler?
And so that 4.8 million figure is from 2009.
2009, correct.
Things probably haven't gotten any better from then, from that time forward. The pictures that you showed are really pretty graphic. You know, 4.8 million dollars and your current estimate of 5 million dollars. Given what needs to be done, I, I question that just a little bit. It just sounds like, or feels like, that once you get into that, you're gonna find other things perhaps that you really weren't aware of. And a lot of the work, you know, renovation, it's hard to develop a set of plans and specifications for the work that needs to be done. My experience has shown that you can very easily add, you know, 20, 25, 30 percent to that figure once the dust settles. So not very, very comfortable, and it looks like that figure is just really enough to get it to sort of where it ought to be. Is my categorization correct?
I would say you're pretty accurate on that. There's some discoveries that are usually made when you start a construction project like this. The level of what we're looking at here, I think, would reduce the amount of those discoveries if you're trying to reuse certain systems. You're more likely to be surprised. I think what this money is about is, or this, this funding is actually replacing of a lot of those piping systems. Where, for instance, if you might want to leave the pipe that's under the pool, in this instance, we would not be doing that. We would be replacing all those supply lines you saw that were plugged up.
Right.
So.
Well, just, just an observation.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Rick.
Okay.
Other questions about the pool?
Hand this back to Margaret.
The next part of the proposed 2013 Parks Conservation Finance Parks Bond would be 2 million dollars set aside for parks and open space land acquisitions. So we've identified continuing the Issaquah Creek Waterways Program, where the city has purchased a number of, quite a few properties all along Issaquah Creek, the East Fork, as well as main stem of Issaquah Creek. Also identif, doing additional acquisitions in our upland areas, our natural open space upland areas, similar to the McCary Woods acquisition, as well as potentially acquiring land for neighborhood parks. Throughout the city of Issaquah, the City Comprehensive Plan, Parks Plan, has a policy of having a neighborhood park within a quarter mile of every resident is, is the goal. And so, as I said, it would be putting additional neighborhood parks throughout the city, including the central Issaquah area. And so next up is Brian.
I guess I sort of get to bring you home. I'd like to give a quick little nod, you know, Councilmember Barber and Margaret herself are very kind about the, you know, all the, the monies we leverage on grants and whatnot, but Margaret herself was the heavy load and the heavy carrier of the grants that we got and received. So I do, I would just like to give a little nod to that because she's done a phenomenal job. And if she was to get a percentage of the grants she's received over the years, she would have been retired long ago with a significant amount of money. Also, I would like to give a little nod to Facilities Maintenance, Rick mentioned that. Facilities Maintenance has done, he gave you, he gave you a peek behind the curtain, because, you know, you don't see that when you walk into the pool. You don't see that when you're walking around the pool. You go in the maintenance room and whatnot, they look sharp, they look clean. He, he, he gave you a little peek behind that curtain and, and what they're really dealing with, and it speaks to the tremendous job they've done keeping it running to this point. And I'd like to thank the member of the Issaquah Swim Team for coming out that, thank you, for coming out just as a community member. Talking about park development, here's a skate park. As you can see, this is, you know, we, we had a plan for four different skate parks around the community that we narrowed down to two. I'm totally joking about that, by the way. Just make sure everybody's awake. I would like to remind, these are potential options that we proposed in the draft, in the draft park bond expenditures. So, once again, two operative words there, potential and draft. But these are some examples of, here on the right, you have the Samamish Skate Park, and on the left, you have the Issaquah Skate Park. And funny enough, took these just a few days ago, on a beautiful sunny day, and they're about fifteen minutes apart in the timeframe in which they were taken, which I think speaks largely to the use and activity within the Issaquah Skate Park versus that at Samamish, just as an example. That was, like I said, literally about fifteen minutes, drove from Samamish straight down, took the picture down at, down at Issaquah. Park Development going into replacing the playground at Gibson Park, as well as at Mirwood. These are just examples of newer parks and sort of what that would look like. It's taken, you know, they're, they're old and in need of replacement. That's what that proposal speaks to. Down at Central Park Pad Three, you know, Central Park Pad Three is where the synthetic turf fields are, most heavily-used park we have. You know, the original plan, we just didn't have the funding for, was to have a, was to have a tot lot, and those are things that people ask for us regularly when you, you know, when people come and use the park in that volume, they always have younger or older siblings that are looking for something to do while their siblings on the field doing what they're doing. So that's always asked for. Picnic shelters are always appreciated, especially during the inclement weather we get, either hot or cold, or more with rain. And then our bleachers, we're, you know, having a place for seating for people to sit around the field and observe the games. Going into the sports field lighting, this is part of the sports field improvements component of the, of the proposed draft park bond expenditures. Lighting at TVP on the left-hand side there, you can see is the lighting we've had on Field Three for the past thirty years. And, and technology has come quite a ways in that time period. On the right-hand side, you can see some of the lighting that we have that is some of the newer, low-glare type of lighting. And that would be, the proposal's to remove the lighting from Field Three and then put additional lighting on Fields Two, Three, and Four, which would increase the usability of those fields as well. Here's a picture, just to give you a flavor of what, of what the difference in lighting is. I mean, if, if the field's lights are on now, you could probably almost catch a glimpse of them out the window if Field Three is on right now. But the new stuff is really directed to just the field. It is, I mean, as you can see, you get off the field, it's dark. So it, I mean, the pictures just sort of say it all when it comes to what you're getting on those fields. It lights the field and off the field, you're in the darkness, and that's why we have security lighting and lighting in the parking lot so people can get to the cars. Field drainage, pictures we have here are from Tippis Valley Park, Fields Three and Four, that we just did last summer. The Parks Maintenance Guys oversaw that, and already we've had a tremendous response to the increased usability of those fields. It just, it gets the water off them quicker, and we've, this year, for the first time, we got on March One, and often Field Three hasn't been used even uptime, sometimes up through June. So it was, I mean, we've had some good weather, too. Weather's always indicative. A lot of rain is a lot of rain, but they really have been significantly increased by that drainage, which is why we're proposing to finish the park and do Fields One, Two, and Five, in addition to the ones that have already been done, and then also doing the Community Center Green in order to help out just with the use that gets out there for the various activities we have out there, as well as concerts on the green, which I think you've, or a lot of you have had experiences with people that maybe have, have gotten maybe muddy shoes or not doing that. This is the Pad Four, when you enter into Central Park, up at, you know, up in the Issaquah Highlands. Pad Four's been sitting there for quite a while. It's that, as you drive into the park, it's on your right-hand side there. What's being proposed here is making it a nice green space for the community to use and just enjoy. A lot like, on the right-hand side here, we have Grandview Park, which, you know, you have a nice view, you have some seating areas, as well as a grass area for, you know, for anybody to use. And it's not really a program space, but just a general open space for anybody to use at any given time, for get-togethers, throwing a ball around, whatnot. And that's what we're looking at for, you know, including drainage on that pad. That would be the end of our presentation, and open any questions, and thank you for your time.
Okay, an additional question? Councilmember Butler?
It's a great presentation. I sort of look at, I know a lot has been done up, up to this point. It's always hard to sort of get the word out and to let our citizens know, in this amount of detail, what, what we've been up to and what has brought us to this particular point. It's sort of like, this, this begins the, the community discussion in a way. We've participated and have sort of tracked the progress, and there have been reports and newspaper reports and the survey results, but once you get to this point and start talking about specific and individual projects, it provides a lot of, a lot of meaning. So I'm glad that we're really going, you know, following this, that we're going to have a workshop where we can begin to talk about, in a little more detail, how we got to where we are and why, how we got to the specific projects and, and the process we went through, and they, some have been council goals and some have, but, you know, that doesn't mean much to a lot of our, our questions. It also provides an opportunity between now and the workshop for us to, provides an opportunity to develop questions and things that we can get to you ahead of time so that you can come back and address some of the things that are on our mind. I'll be very, very honest, my list of projects would probably be a lot different than just about everyone else's, just as other folks in the audience's list would be a little bit different than everyone else's, too. So I recognize the challenge of trying to, to figure out what's the best for, you know, the community and how we're gonna spend that money. Because when there's money available, you know, everyone has their own idea about how it ought to be spent. When I started playing tennis in Issaquah, there were no tennis courts, and now we've got all kinds of tennis courts. So tennis courts wouldn't be very, very high on my priority list right now because I don't see a shortage of them. But maybe, and I don't have young kids, so I'm glad that we're, we're sort of starting, you know, a broader, more public discussion, and as we move forward, I think we can, we'll, we'll figure out what the right thing to do is regardless of what that is.
Thank you. The motion before you, which was made some considerable time ago, was to forward Agenda Bill 6579 to the May Council Work Session. And so I will take your remarks as being in support of that forwarding. At least I believe that that was what I heard within them, and I will ask the Council for additional discussion or questions on that motion. Councilmember Winterstein?
All right, thank you. So I'm going to support the motion to move it to the May Work Session, so regarding that. It is pretty exciting to be this step closer to doing something about the pool. It's an incredible city asset. I think its value to the community, to our citizens, to my family personally, having used it, to neighbors and friends. And, and so this is, to get to this stage, to be looking at a concrete proposal about doing something about the pool, this is a proposal to fix it in place. And, and, you know, at the, the, one of the topics that I'll be very interested in discussing with my, you know, colleagues perhaps in May would be, is this, is this the right thirty-year plan for Issaquah? Is fixing it in place the right thing for us? We've, you know, and I think about our city identity and what we've recently done with the Central Issaquah Plan and the, the, the goal of attracting, you know, more families and businesses. And I think about, you know, the right long-term investment that this community would make in such a unique facility that serves such a wide regional area. I'm gonna be very interested in having conversations about the sizing of, of the pool piece. One place, I, I look at this as a, as a fantastic baseline, and it probably would achieve, though, Councilmember Butler's comments about the true costs is probably a, well, good comment. But, you know, perhaps, perhaps there's, there's more than we could do. So that's gonna be part of what I'm gonna look to discuss regarding the pool in the May timeframe. Thank you.
Other discussions or questions about the motion to move this to the May Workshop? Councilmember Mertz?
I'm also gonna be supporting moving this to the workshop, but I would, going forward, like more information about the projected lifespan of the fixes that are gonna be going in. I have a little bit of a concern over the slide that showed all the repairs done over the last twenty years, and that there was a statement that most of those things need replacing at this point. So that tells me that if, you know, some of those things, if, if the more recent things already need replacing, then that means they'll need replacing in the not-too-distant future. So I'd like to have a better handle on what this means in terms of projected lifespan of the, of the repairs. Thank you.
Okay, other questions or discussion? Councilmember Goodman?
I'll be supporting the motion as well, and I have the same questions about the lifespan of the, the pool with the investment that we would potentially be making. I'll also be interested in the background on the two skate park proposal and Central Park Pad Four. That was the first I'd seen of what the, what that pad would look like, and so I would like some more information on that, how we arrived at that.
Councilmember Barber?
Also, in, in regards to the lifespan, as you were speaking, in regards to the replacement of some of the pipes and so on, and the potential need to replace them, but from sort of experience, I think just because of the nature of the swimming pool with the chlorine and the corrosives that are there, I don't, I, I guess I'd like to make sure that I understand if it's our pool that is having issues with needing of replacements, or if this would be standard replacements that any pool, even if it was a brand-new one, would be needing replacement of certain parts and pieces and because of the corrosive nature of a, of a swimming pool and the chlorine and/or the salt now, if it's gonna be a salt pool. So what's the replacement and future expense look?
Councilmember Shear?
Since we're throwing out some questions, and I see that as well. One thing I didn't see in the agenda bill was what the property tax cost would be from this bond. So there was nothing that told me what this would actually cost to voters, and, and it made me wonder as well about what the difference would be between a 10-million-dollar bond and doing something more. And it gets to the heart of many of the comments that I've heard tonight, which is, if we're talking about significant repairs or significant projects that are necessary, not just with the pool, but with other items as well, why not dream bigger and aim higher? And, you know, what would the cost be if the bond were higher? Is that something that the voting public would be willing to support? You could even dream as big as, as a large sports complex and, you know, take on significant projects like Starfire down in Kent, or you could just focus on building a new pool for more money, or doing significant renovations to avoid the replacement of replacing things that Councilmember Mertz talks about. So I'm just sort of interested in what is the range? I'm not sure where we came up with 10 million dollars, other than from the EMC study. It was a nice round number they used, but I don't know, you know, if the bond were 20 million dollars, is it gonna cost me as a homeowner an extra $2 a month? I might be willing to support that. So I don't know what the, the level is, I don't know what other jurisdictions have done in terms of the bond. I know we talked at one point about expanding the boundaries of this beyond the city. I don't know if that's even viable. So I, I echo all the comments that I've heard here this evening, but I'm also interested in the, the financial piece. And then lastly, whether any sort of private partnerships have been explored, like we did with the soccer club with the last bond and for the turf fields. And so is that a way that we can leverage some of those funds in addition to the grant money that, that Margaret's been able to come up with? So, you know, looking at the financial picture as well before we get to putting this in front of the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other council questions or discussion on this topic? Looking at it in a work session, study session will provide another opportunity to look at the findings of the study and the costs that were discussed in that particular study. So that's helpful information to have as a question. So any other additional questions or comments? Is the council ready then to act upon moving this topic to the May work study session? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passed unanimously. The next item to come before the council is Agenda Bill 6604, Council Meetings, Rules of Procedure and Committee Structures. And this topic has been in front of the Services and Safety Committee. Correct. Has been in front of the Committee of the Hall as well. Recently, in fact. All right, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very brief history. We started the conversation back in January to review the committee structure. We had further discussion at our Committee of the Hall Council Meeting on March the 26th, and prior to that, as it was at Services and Safety. At the Committee of the Hall Council, we asked the city clerk to prepare an agenda bill that outlined certain changes to how we do business. Those changes would reduce monthly Committee of the Hall Council Meetings to quarterly. It would consider changing our council meeting starting time from 7:30 to 7:00. Consider opportunity at council regular meetings for council members to provide input on emerging issues and seek guidance for emerging issues of a regional nature. Consider the opportunity for non-action items by short presentations to be heard under regular business, but those would be accompanied by an agenda bill. To establish monthly Committee of the Hall Work Sessions. Develop a planning calendar. Merge Transportation with UTEC. And then shift any economic vitality issues from the Council Land and Shore Committee to Council Services and Safety Committee. Most of those have been done, and they are in the agenda bill that we will consider this evening. Councilmember Share did provide a number of comments that he provided to the entire city council, which everyone has seen. I'd like to comment on a number of those before I make a motion. One of those was whether December was the best month for a COW. Well, truth of the matter is, December is probably not the best month for a COW or a study session or much of anything, but we do have the discretion of, and the option already to cancel any meetings, city council meetings, work study, Committee of the Hall Council, or committee meetings, if we so choose. There was a question about work sessions, a definition of what we would do, and Tina, could you put that up? Our clerk has done some work in providing some definition around that, that I would like for her to share with us at this time. But in a nutshell, as she pulls it up, it provides an opportunity for council members to hear, discuss, and work through items in an informal table setting versus dais format. It allows for agenda topics to be set by the mayor and council president, and items may be added with committee consensus. No final action would occur at work sessions, similar to our Committee of the Hall Council Meetings. Meetings would be chaired by the council president, and when appropriate, agenda topics are led by assigned committee members or designee. I don't look forward to chairing each and every work session, and I believe that with a reduced number of committees and sharing the workload with others, other committee members or folks that have a special interest, who either volunteered or asked to present, would be the model that that statement is intended to suggest. It would, all would provide an opportunity for public input. We have sort of modeled the work sessions in the several that we have had right now, and the intent would be to take public comment at the end of each topic. So for example, the work session coming up on urban growth centers, which will be the first topic on Wednesday, following that discussion, there would be an opportunity for public comment. And then there would be an opportunity during the transportation concurrency for public These are not open-ended filibusters, but the chair would have the opportunity to limit time depending on the number of folks and the agenda. So this work session definition would end up in our resource manual, where we put the committee responsibilities. We list those and what they would be doing. The intent would be to include this in our updated resource manual. Another question was around, again, language allowing the cancellation of monthly work sessions. We have that prerogative. Not only do we have the prerogative of canceling work sessions, but if the need might arise to schedule other work sessions during the month also. So it's, that is an opportunity that would be available to us. About having individual, I know, Josh, you had mentioned rotating the responsibilities between committee chairs with the reduced number of committees. I've not really, we haven't had a lot of discussion around that. We've got time to see how that works. And with, if this agenda bill passes, we have an opportunity to, for council members to express a preference as to which committees they would like and which ones they would like to chair. And that process would start soon after the approval of the agenda bill, if the council decides to go in that direction. Now, it doesn't seem to make much sense to start work sessions at 6:00 and the COW at 6:30. So I would, I'd like to know whether we should standardize that. I think we probably should. It would make more sense. But we could have that discussion once there's a motion before us. And then there is the question about meeting, moving council meetings to Tuesday if Monday's the holiday, which is generally what we do. So that's a scheduling thing with work sessions, with council meetings being the first and third. There was some discussion around having the work sessions on the second Tuesday, but we might have to realign some committee structures in order to accommodate that. And so, Josh, does that sort of hit the topics that you had before I make a motion?
It does. I guess there are a couple of things that I thought of after I sent out that email, which are similarly related. One was, in terms of the date, having, the agenda bill proposes having the work sessions on the second Monday of each month, although that remains to be seen, I suppose. In my mind, that creates a situation where virtually every Monday of the month, we are engaged in a council-related activity. And should there be any non-council activities, whether that be regional or in our personal lives, that really takes Mondays out of the equation. If we are substituting work sessions essentially for the COW meetings, I would ask whether it can, it would make sense to consider keeping the work sessions on the fourth Tuesday of the month, which is a schedule we're used to in terms of having monthly meetings, and then adding the COW meetings on the second Monday on the quarterly basis or at times to be determined. Because then we're keeping a consistent calendar, and if we were to do 6:30, which is the, I believe, the current time that we currently use, then, as Council President Butler mentioned, it would standardize that time. So just some food for thought on perhaps whether the fourth Tuesday would be the best. You know, in terms of the December issue, I agree, we can always cancel it. I looked ahead for the next three years. That second Tuesday is always the week of Christmas. I have a feeling that it will always, I'm sorry, the fourth Tuesday, that will always be canceled. And so I just sort of wonder about setting ourselves up for the 99% likelihood that that meeting will be canceled, and why even bother to put in a municipal code section that we're going to have a meeting in the month of December that we know there's virtually no chance we won't? So why codify that? So my overarching comment here is, I think there are still a few details that we need to hammer out, and personally, I would rather see us hammer out the devil in the details before we start amending the municipal code, because we've spent a lot of time on this process, and I'd like to see us, I don't want to say get it right, because I think we are inching towards getting it right, but I want to see us finish off the details and figure out things like chair assignments, not specific individuals, but just how we do it, when the meetings are, what time. And I think that each of us as individual council members deserves to know that before we start changing city code, and I think the public deserves to know that before we just say, hey, this is what we're going to in the month of May, which is coming up very soon. So that's where I stand on this, is I'm just not quite ready to start amending the code before we really finish off those details. But thank you. Thank you for answering those questions.
You're welcome. I'm going to move to adopt ordinance number. 2675, amending various sections within chapters 2.04 and 2.06 of the Issaquah Municipal Code relating to council meetings and rules of procedure for council meetings.
Second. Moved by Butler, seconded by Barber. Now questions and discussion. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Council President Butler and Council Deputy President Winterstein for shepherding this process through. I had concerns early on. I don't, I'm one of those, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But I saw the opportunity and the reason why we were doing this. And I do feel that this does preserve and protect public input to the legislative process, which was really one of the critical pieces for me, and that it's going to increase efficiency without forestalling the measured consideration of the issues before us. So I commend you, and I think it's definitely worth trying and seeing how it works for this year, so I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. For me, I think one of the best pieces that I see in his is the work study sessions. The idea for all of us to sit around and really have some discussion, and actually to be able to hear all of the information at the same time. There's been so many issues that have come before this council that have been very important issues, but only three council members, because of the current format we have, could listen to that and ask questions at any one time. So this work study session process allows us all to be able to be at the same table, hear the information all the same, and be able to ask questions. So I'm very excited about that particular piece, and it will take some of the larger and more important issues, or not necessarily important, but more in-depth conversation to the work study session. A lot of it can still stay within the committee structure. If we go to the Monday, the second Monday of the month for the work study session, which was sort of my recommendation, that does impact Services and Safety, which I felt that we would be able to find another day of the, if, you know, we could change that to sort of keep the Mondays. And I never thought of having every Monday being an issue, but that could possibly be. I think where I was sort of looking at it was, it would be nice to have a week at which there wasn't every single week of every single month a meeting, so that there wasn't some means for the ability to get away without missing meetings. So that was part of the idea of keeping at least the fourth month and only putting the COW in the fourth week, not the fourth month. It would be less meetings potentially in the last week of the month.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Goodman.
So the, what's before us is what's written in the agenda bill, which is the, so we still have to decide on which Monday, which date, is that right? Which days?
The agenda, excuse me.
Yes. Councilmember Butler.
I believe we do, because in the agenda bill, it lists the second Monday for the work session. For me, I like the second Monday, and, because it does free up the end of the month. And generally, for me, the end of the month, things are a little slack, so I get the work out of the way, you know, the first three weeks, and can coast a little bit towards the end of the month. But, you know, I don't have real, real strong feelings. So if someone wants to change that, they can offer that as an amendment.
And Josh, you had discussed rearranging that how?
Thank you. To answer Councilmember Goodman's question, my suggestion is to, if we're going to go forward with work sessions, to have those scheduled on the fourth Tuesday of the month as if they were a COW meeting that we currently have had. We're used to having a meeting on the fourth Tuesday. If, you know, the public's used to having those meetings on the fourth Tuesday. The other thing it would do, I'd point out, is by having the work sessions on the fourth Tuesday, you would conceivably eliminate the issue about the Committee of the Hall being scheduled on that fourth Tuesday in December, because then you would actually be theoretically canceling a work session and not a code-mandated Committee of the Hall meeting, which is specified in a particular month. And I'm still concerned about listing the month of December as a very specific month. You know, why not list October? Why not, you know, why not just pick other months? Because we know that we're not going to have a meeting on the fourth Tuesday, we're probably not going to have any meetings on the fourth anything of that particular month. And so we're just sort of setting ourselves up for no reason to cancel it.
City Attorney Tanaka would like to make a remark.
Just to keep things straight, there seems to be some confusion here. The work session, as is stated in Section 3 of the ordinance, is a Committee of the Hall Work Session. It's not a council meeting, as I understand the maker of the motions. It's chaired by the council president, not the mayor, and so therefore, it's a And so, therefore, it's a committee of the whole. So, you actually are having a committee of the whole meeting work session on the, as is written now, the second Tuesday. You'll have to change the date. So, it's, if you have it to, on the fourth Tuesday, you won't, you will be, and you cancel it, it will be canceling a committee of the whole meeting. The work session version, but a committee of the whole. So, I think, you know, since all of you are members of the committee of the whole and all of you are council members, it gets a little confusing. But just to keep it legally straight, everyone should understand that, what you're doing.
Councilmember Winterstein?
All right, thank you. So, at the moment, there is no motion to amend the proposal. So, I'm going to comment, and as it is proposed. The proposed date for the committee of the whole work session on second Mondays of each month is something I support. What it provides for us, of those of us that are on certain regional committees, such as Sound Cities, we're assured that we'll have either a regular council meeting or a committee of the whole meeting immediately prior to Sound Cities. And one of our objectives, and what this allows us to do then, is to discuss whether it be a specific agenda items or for the kind of, for the good of the whole discussion at one of those meetings, we can have those regional issue discussions with our colleagues and then take that representation to, to example for Sound Cities. So, that is one reason I will continue to support the second Monday of the month for the committee of the whole work session timeframe. The other comment I wanted to make is that one thing we haven't defined in here is about the preparation and how to conduct these meetings, the work session meetings. And just one thing I'll be on the lookout for is that we, that whereas traditionally the committee of the whole has been mostly a one-way presentation with usually very little dialogue, these are substantially different in that we intend to engage everybody, you know, in conversation. And so, I think the items that are on these agendas and the preparation, they require preparation, whoever's going to lead the discussion. And so, I think we need to keep aware that the purpose really is that it's an extended committee. It's a committee of the whole. And like the committees we're all familiar with, where there's a lot of discussion, there's usually some type of guided, guided part of that as well, somebody leading each one. We need to retain that and make sure that we have that, whether they be council members or staff members. And so, preparation will be required for each one of these. So, and in regard to, so the only, so at this moment, I still, I'm not aware of any changes to the motions on the floor. And I'm going to, I continue to support it as proposed.
Councilmember Scher?
I'll remedy that situation. I would move to amend Section 3 of this agenda bill, Section 204040, to read, "Work sessions will be held the fourth Tuesday of each month at 6:30 p.m. in the council chambers of City Hall South. No further amendments after those words."
Okay. They moved. There are second? I've not heard of second. Councilmember Mertz?
I'll move it for the purposes of discussion.
Okay, it's been seconded by Councilmember Mertz. Additional discussion? Councilmember Scher?
So, I just want to point out, in response to the comment about how the fourth Tuesday gives us a free week, that'll be true for nine months out of the year. But under this proposed agenda bill, we will still be having COW meetings in March, June, and September. And so, the idea that somehow we're going to free up our fourth week of the month and not have any meetings ever, I don't think is simply true. And I think, again, by having meetings every single Monday, you know, the Bellevue City Council has meetings every Monday, but they're a full-time city council. They meet every Monday. It basically eliminates our ability to schedule any non-council-related activities on a Monday. And, you know, that may not impact folks and their personal lives. I think it has that potential. I think it has the potential of impacting certain regional activities. I know every year, there's a elected officials reception that often conflicts with our scheduling that the Bellevue Chamber puts on. And I think that has in the past conflicted with one of our council meetings. But that starts eliminating Mondays. So, you know, if that's where we're going to go, then that's the scheduling. But that's the reason, I guess, the primary reason why I'm asking for maintaining the fourth Thursday, or fourth Tuesday, rather.
All right, just further discussion on this particular amendment? Yes, Councilmember Mertz?
I want to agree with Councilmember Winterstein. As the delegate to the Sound Cities Association, we had, this last month, we were lucky enough to have an issue that was sort of telegraphed ahead of time, or a couple of issues that were telegraphed ahead of time that we were able to discuss in council. But over the last two years, I've had just a huge number of issues where the agenda comes out too late to have that conversation with council. And so, I've not been able to present a city position on issues of regional importance. So, I understand Councilmember Scher's concerns. But I think, at least for this particular regional engagement, it's important to get into that second week. So, I'm going to oppose the amendment.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Goodman?
I, too, share your concern about the every Monday. I'm persuaded by Councilmember Winterstein's comments and Councilmember Mertz's comments about the timing of that. And if we find out that oftentimes, when you change a schedule, you get into something and you realize that maybe the timing of that isn't perfect. And so, maybe there's another time in the month that a work-study session might work for us. I think it's a place for us to, a place for us to start. And so, I will oppose the amendment on that basis.
Other discussion? Have all council members had an opportunity to speak to the amendment who wish to speak? All right, Councilmember Scher?
If permissible, I wish to modify the proposed amendment with the permission of the secondor. And to withdraw the request for the fourth Tuesday based on comments on the motion, but ask to amend to leave the 6:30 p.m. start time for the second Monday of each month, which would be consistent with the COW meetings and perhaps not impact folks' supper time as well.
Okay, that's good.
I guess, I should, I guess if you say that, I consider that consistent with my second.
Friendly amendments are not really a normal parliamentary procedure. That motion was withdrawn. I believe you withdrew your motion. So, what I think you just did was to propose a new amendment to the time. And if that was the intent of what you said, then I would ask if someone would please second that.
I will second that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Mertz seconded. It was moved by Councilmember Scher. So, the motion before you right now, the amendment before you, is to change the time, which is listed in Section 3, 2.04.040, Committee of the Whole Work Sessions, to 6:30 p.m. from 6:00 p.m. So, that's the motion in front of you right now. Discussion on that particular motion? Any further discussion required? Are you ready to act upon that motion then? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that is an amendment of the motion, the original motion that you had before you. And do you wish further discussion on that motion? Adopting ordinance number 2675. Councilmember Scher?
Thank you. Since we're back to the main motion, just, I guess, one last comment. You know, I wasn't at the committee of the whole meeting where this was discussed, because I had a holiday. And I apologize, and that's why I sent the questions out, you know, in advance to ask. And I certainly didn't mean to put anyone on the spot this evening in raising these issues, because I didn't have a chance to participate in that last discussion. I'm still a little concerned about the details here. And as the one individual who will essentially be stripped of a committee chairmanship by virtue of this change, I'm a little bit hesitant to support these sort of wide-sweeping changes to our structure. So, while I appreciate the willingness of the body to accept my amendment to 6:30 p.m., I will not be supporting the main motion this evening.
All right, other discussion on this? Is the council ready to, excuse me?
I think, I would suggest, on that section that we've working on, 040, although the catch line says committee of the whole work sessions, which is fine, that the main body say work sessions of the committee of the whole council, just to be clear on that. If that is acceptable, I would make that as a technical amendment, or suggestion.
Suggestion, all right.
It is to the maker of the motion?
Is it to the secondor? I believe I was. That was Councilmember Barber, yes. I had to go back and look. It was Councilmember Barber. So, that title line will be work sessions of the committee of the whole?
No, the, in the main body, it just says now work sessions. And I would like to add, of the committee of the whole.
All right. Sounds like a technical edit.
Yeah, it does now.
So, unless I see objection from the council that technical edit is included, yes? Okay. All righty, Scrivner's error has been corrected. Goes H.I.J., not K. With those edits, is the council ready to act upon adopting this ordinance as discussed? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, that was six ayes and one nay. Councilmember Scher in opposition. Councilmember Butler?
I would move to approve the revised council committee structure.
Second? Was that?
Did you not do that?
Yeah.
I did not say that. I did not do that.
That wasn't in the motion, the motion that just passed.
Ah.
This is a separate.
I got you. I see it. All right, so, yes, indeed. So, you are moving the revised structure?
And it's been seconded.
And it's been seconded?
By...
Yep. Moved by Butler, seconded by Barber. Any discussion, additional discussion or questions required on this? If not, are you ready to act upon it? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that's six in favor, one in opposition. Councilmember Scher opposed. The next activity, you have gone through regular business. Councilmember Butler?
There was someone that really wasn't recognized for her good work on this. And I would like to recognize our city clerk, Tina Eggers, for her responsiveness and her great work in support of the council of getting us to where we are on this.
Researching all the various different cities' structures and so on, yes? All right, thank you for that. So, now, we have concluded regular business. And as previously announced, there will be an executive session to discuss potential property acquisition. That is RCW 42.30.110 bracketed, one bracketed lowercase b. And it is expected to take 15 minutes. No action is anticipated. There has been a request for a brief recess before we go into executive session. So, why don't we take five minutes or so?
Hey, Peter? Anything new on the pricing?